The street expands also. And how much is allowed and how much is going to interfere with the change of the neighborhood? Is questionable, but right now, the way it is, I don't have any problem with with it because we don't have any rules against it.
Oh, this, this, I don't know how it affects the street. You don't see it from the street though.
No, you don't.
All right. Anyway, okay, you're, you're okay. Dan?
I'm okay with it as well. It doesn't seem to, like I say, impose upon.
George? I concur. And Kevin?
I don't have any comments or questions.
Okay, I think, any, any comment from the public? I think it's okay for you to get on the agenda for the ZBA. Because the ZBA is not going to meet until after our next meeting. And, and, and you should get on the agenda and come back to us before that ZBA meeting with the letter from next door. We'll be okay.
Um, I'll, and I'll reach out to Sarah for the schedule for, for the ZBA, but I hope that letter before the next meeting for sure.
Yeah, the, the ZBA meeting, um, gonna get on the August meeting for the 18th, the deadline is July 13th.
Thank you. Yeah, so you, the ZBA is not meeting in, before our next.
No, the, the deadline has passed for the July meeting.
Okay. And it's July 13th is the deadline for August 18?
Correct.
Anyway, thank you. Okay. All right, so you're okay to get on the agenda, but if you don't get us the letter from next door, it may be a problem of, of going to the ZBA.
I will make sure you get it, Caesar. Thank you.
Okay, any, anything else on this, on 202014, Ecker? Okay, we're done. We'll go to number three. But you, thank you. Nice presentation. You made it clear about the impact, or lack of impact.
Right, thank you.
All right, we're moving along to number three. 202007. This is three Clifton Place. We still have Matt on there, Sarah.
I'm trying to get myself off.
This is all new to us. Let me make sure I'm on the right page of notes here. Okay. Can't make the same mistake twice.
Hello? Ah, my name is Herbert Feuerstein. I'm the architect, three Clifton Place. Somewhere out there is the landscape architect as well, but I'll start the presentation. We met with you in March was, which was a very long time ago and, and what's been going on lately. And we had had some comments from you and we tried to follow your lead. Briefly, to just go back in time, we talked about the historic nature of this property. That was built at the early 1900s. The front door faced Broadway, so actually the rear of the property is the front in terms of the inside of the house. For, for that and other reasons, the landscape architect, Matthew Willinger, located the pool to the side of the house, avoiding the slope in the back and also creating a direct access from the porch, which we showed you photos the last time. And we also tried to preserve a hemlock tree that's located in the middle of the yard, as well as work with the sun angles on the site. As a result of this, the lot does not comply with current lot coverage. Although this house has remained largely intact since the early 1900s, it does not comply with lot coverage. And also the pool is in, is beyond the rear of the property, so there's a, a variance involved in that. When we came to you the last time, we had increased the lot coverage by a small amount. And you basically advised us that although you understood what the intent of the designer was and the intent of the plan and that it may have made sense to you, you could not, uh, you could not afford us to go to the ZBA for the variances if we were increasing the lot coverage. So we had three months to go back to the drawing board. And what we've done is eliminated a shed, eliminated some hardscape, and also reduced the size of the pool area by shrinking the, the paved area between the pool and the screen porch. And as a result, our lot coverage is, I believe it's sixty, fifty-six square feet less than what is there now. So we're reducing the lot coverage by point nine percent. And and then, and the one other thing, I want to be, you know, fully transparent, the, the application data sheet, the actual lot coverage increased slightly because when we appeared before you the last time, the, the tops of the retaining walls had not been included. And that was one of the comments from Han Engineering, and we addressed that in the interim. So that is really it. We, we also received Han Engineering's comments this morning. And we're certainly, you know, happy to comply with all of them. Some, some of this stuff has been done already. I don't know if you want me to go through those, or that would be better, that I do that in writing and present it. And one last item, we did have two tree letters from arborists about the trees that were being removed. I did not include them in the, in the thumb drive that I, that I submitted and I sent them to your office yesterday. A little late.
Let's start with the tree because, that you just mentioned it.
Yes.
It, it, I got, we got the impression from the, the landscape architect, landscape person we have, that you, that there's a 56-inch tree to be removed? Is that true?
Yes, um, I don't have the letter in front of me. There, there are two trees that are involved.
Well, there's one right in the middle of the pool, which is.
One, one is in the middle of the pool. I believe that's the smaller of the two trees. I believe that's.
But this 56 inches is somewhere else.
Yes, it's, it's alongside the garage. It's not in our way in any way, but when the arborist walked the property, it's the same, I believe it's a Norway maple, and it's in poor condition. And he was concerned about its safety. So it's not really, it's not part of this application, except for the fact that it's a tree that he thought was diseased and should be removed. And we felt it's only proper to, to, to put that into the, you know, to put that into this application because that's site work that will be addressed.
I don't know if that's something for the tree commission. George, what do you think?
Well, first of all, the, the, the big issue here is if that's a 56-inch tree, that's close to, I think, with the definition of a heritage tree. I mean, it's a, it's not a, a, a minor little event.
No, I understand. We're willing to take it out of the application too. You know, for the sake of, of not, you know, dragging things on and just, and just keep it. But this was, this was advised by their arborist. And we're happy, we're happy to, to, to deal directly with the village on that and make that a separate item. Because it, it really has nothing to do with the pool.
Well, you know, from my personal experience, we had a, a tree that's well over 250 years old. It's, it's, it's huge. And, and the arborist came on and said, oh, it's got to come down. But being in the age involved, it, it, I, I got a second opinion and he said, no, that doesn't, it can be treated and we'll feed it. And, and it's got some fungus, so we can fix that. And it does, and, and two years later, it's, it's perfectly fine.
We would be happy to.
Maybe you can look at somebody treating it and feeding it.
We'd be happy to do that and, and.
And take it out of the application.
We have some changes and we'll just take that out of the application.
Herb, I can speak about the trees also if you'd like.
Who's speaking? Could you identify yourself?
Yes, my na, my name is Matthew Willinger and I'm the landscape designer who is working on this project. I am the one who actually did approach the arborist about getting, reviewing the trees on site. So there is one tree that is in, right in the area where we would like to put the pool. That tree is obviously to, to me, and I think it would be to any of you who visited, it is definitely a failing tree, which I would call hazardous. That, that's the reason we wanted the arborist to look at it. I think whether this pool was going in or not, I would definitely recommend to our, our clients, the homeowners, that this tree needs to be removed. If you look at the plan, you can see behind this tree is a much larger, and actually a glorious tree, a beautiful oak. And this tree has grown in the shade of that tree. I, I would assume for many, many decades. It has an enormous amount of rot in its core. You can clearly see that it has, it has fissures and it's split. So that is actually something that we observed right from the beginning. I, I do have those letters that I could show you, that I could share if you, if anyone would like to see them now. So that, that was something very important to us, you know, regardless of whether, you know, we're, we're building this pool, which we certainly want to do.
I don't, I don't know about, I don't know about the other board members, but I, I don't have that much of a problem with the tree in the footprint of the pool, but the, the 56-inch that has nothing to do with the project, I had an issue with. Plus, another, another comment from our landscape person is, there's a hemlock where there's root disturbance. Is that, is that accurate? Or what are you doing with the hemlock?
Well, there is a hemlock in the backyard and the hemlock, that also is a magnificent tree. Part of the, a big part of the reason we want to place the pool where we, where we are placing it is because we actually wanted to protect that hemlock. Moving the pool anywhere in the backyard would change the grades, you know, drastically and would.
Why was there a comment that going into the root, is root disturbance on that hemlock? Is that an accurate statement? What's the story?
Yes, that is an accurate, that is an accurate statement that there could possibly be, that there could possibly be root disturbance. So that was another reason we asked our arborist to visit the site. We are, what we would like to do is we would like to move a wall and we would, you know, definitely do everything possible to protect that tree, including any root pruning in advance that the arborist would recommend. And the exact placement of our wall would be dependent on his recommendations. And, you know, the, the roots, the vital roots on of that tree.
Right, because you just described it as a magnificent hemlock, so you're aware that, you know, any root disturbance could kill it.
Mr., if you don't mind, Matthew.
Yeah.
There's a hope to slide, if you, I don't know how to share screens, I'm sorry. But i, if you have the plans in front of you, there, there are steps leading up to the rear yard to the left of the hemlock tree. And there's a retaining wall that we're hoping to shift a, a little bit to the right. And I, I think you could make this a term of the, of the permit just because I know how villages want to protect, you know, protect themselves. But the thought process was that when we excavate around that tree, we're going to have somebody look at it. And if we need to re, to move that wall further away from the tree, we will.
Okay. I think, I think, I thought you agreed to take the 56-inch tree out of the application.
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, George, you had a, an issue with coverage. Do you want to pursue that or are you okay?
Oh, I don't think I had an issue with coverage at all.
I thought that you had a comment the last time we, we met on coverage.
Well, because I was, because I was increasing the coverage.
Correct. That's been, that's been addressed.
It wasn't a lot. It was a 400-something foot increase. And just based on precedent and principle, it was not something that you could have approved.
Okay. Okay, let me poll the board. Sheila, you have anything?
No, I'm just concerned about an old tree and with the root disturbance, the, the roots are deep enough, or if they're very shallow roots.
Well, we're, we're going to ask for a tree protection plan and, and a tree replacement plan. And as, as, for the next meeting. But let me finish polling. Dan?
As long as they have a tree protection plan and a replacement plan, just in case, you know, I'd be in favor.
George, you okay?
I'm okay with, with basically what the applicant has suggested, which is that when they get to that on site, if they have to move the wall to protect the tree, the tree wins. Okay? So I, I would prefer that than to have a, a preface of like, well, if this doesn't work, we just put in trees. Because that.
Right, that doesn't work.
We don't want to remove that hemlock in any way.
Yes, it's very important to us to say that.
Then great, then everyone's in sync with this, that that's, that's the goal.
Evan?
I, I don't have any questions or comments other than just procedurally, how does this, how does this work? So the 56-inch tree is out of the picture. We're talking about the protection of the hemlock right now.
And tree replacement.
Note on the plan that says they'll stay.
Yeah.
They'll come up with a number of how far they'll stay away from the critical zone.
Yeah.
Once exposed, they'll put it on the plan.
Or if, if I could suggest is we could also offer to have an arborist look at the roots and make a determination. And even if you want, if you, you have a village arborist, correct?
We have a tree, we have a tree commission. I'm not sure he's an arborist.
Okay, but I mean, we could have, our, our plan wasn't for letting myself or the contractor determine what's a safe, you know, what's safe. We, we, we don't know where the, where the roots end. And the idea is, if you, if you slowly excavate, you can see what's there. And then you could make the determination at what's a safe distance. And if you, if you need.
It actually was one of the recommendations of Suzanne Nolan. That, that there be an arborist look to, to do a, a tree inventory and look at the impacts of proposed construction on the trees to remain and methods for mitigating impacts.
Right. One thing I'd like to ask, and I don't know if it's possible, is the Sykes have spent a considerable amount of money on us getting to this point. If it's possible, our, our work area is, is mostly on the side of the house where the pool is and where dry wells will be. In that area, the only thing we're doing is moving that retaining wall. There'll also be two dry wells there, shown on the engineer's plans. But they're very close to the driveway, that if we can identify, it's really, it's really that hemlock that's a critical tree. And the, we're not near any other trees other than that maple that's in the middle of the pool that will be coming down. Most of the heavy construction is in the front.
Okay. I'm going to add, any comment from the public? Okay, I think, I think what you were asking is, can you go to the ZBA? And, and if you were listening to the previous applicant, the ZBA, you're too late for the, for the month coming. So you'll have to go to the August ZBA. So you're coming back to us prior to the ZBA. So get on the agenda for the ZBA for August. And when you come back to us August 1st, we would like to hear about the, the hemlock tree. And we'd like to hear about other tree protection issues. And since there is a tree coming down in, in the pool, a tree, a tree replacement plan. I don't think it should be one for one. It's a rather large tree, so maybe two for one. I'm sure you got a lot of property there. I'm sure you'll find a spot for a tree or two. Okay? Kevin, did I think that that cover what you were, you're concerned about?
Yes, I, I think so. I mean, so when they return, would we, what would we see as far as the hemlock is concerned? Would we see photos of the root system?
No, we're not going to, we can't start work until we have a permit. I think, I think that has to be conditional. And, you know, I hate to say, Mr. Marin should come and take a look at the tree, tree board. Doesn't work. But we need an expert to look at it and make that.
You'll put a note on the plan that the arborist will contact us with his, with his answer before.
Prior to any work being, prior to any roots being touched on that tree.
Yeah, well, then you'll have the arborists come out prior to the start of the wall, once, once you start excavating the wall.
Right, right.
Put that note on the plan and put it in big, bold letters.
All right.
Yeah.
Figure it out.
And, and in a narrative on a letter, you could say what you're going to do. Just what you're saying now. How, how are you going to deal with the hemlock, the arborist phasing, you're going to test it and so forth. A, a, a nice explanation in, in a letter so that, and then as Ed said, you know, put some language right on the plans also.
Very good.
And then we'll take a look at it July, August 1st. And like I said, Ed, go over the, what's the deadline for your August ZBA?
The August ZBA meeting is.
13th.
August 18th.
Oh, 18th.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, and the deadline is July 13th.
13th, correct, okay.
The deadline's not far away. You got to, that's across the hall at the clerk's office.
So, so you're free to go on the agenda, but we, before you really go.
Yes, yes, before we'll be allowed to appear, we have to.
Yeah, we want to get you on the agenda, so move along.
Right, and where'd you say that application?
Of course, it's 591707. No, it's in the clerk's office.
All right. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Any more questions?
Can I actually, can I actually ask a question? I'm, I'm sorry. I just want to ask you your opinion about that other tree.
Which other?
So, so the other tree that was mentioned, and I, I just.
Excuse me, hold on. The other tree being the 56-inch tree that is now no longer part of the application?
Yes, if you don't mind for one second. And it's just because the only reason that that tree came up is because we asked the, an arborist to visit the property. And he just wanted it very clear that he, that in his opinion, that tree was hazardous. So.
You apply for a permit to the tree commission and you have to discuss them with them.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
And but, 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 you know, it is a 56-inch tree. I, I would request that you get a second arborist to see if it can be treated and saved. I mean, you don't, you don't find 56-inch trees around the corner every day.
Right, right. Thank you.
Okay, are we done?
Yes.
I think we didn't get any response and none of the board members, so I think we're done for this. Thank you very much. Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number four. Now I got my notes for this now. 202016, 18 Meadow Brook Road. This time I have the correct page.
Hi, I'm Douglas McClure. I'm the architect, or the new architect for the Staburskis at 18 Meadow Brook Road. Can you hear me all right?
We can see you and hear you.
Good, okay. So this project has actually been before you previously. It was approved and permitted and it's actually in construction. During their original bid fit phase, they had some, they asked me to look at it because they were concerned about some issues. And so I suggested some changes. They have subsequently made me the architect in charge. So I have to file this, the changes as a new application. I can't do this under the old submission. So there's a couple of, that makes it a little complicated in some ways. The main changes that we're discussing are the, let me call up the drawings here. On your original, your original approval, there was a, a smaller front porch here and a very small, oops, that's not right. Sorry, getting used to this. A, a small dormer to make the bathroom upstairs have some head height for the client to use the shower because he's a little tall and he actually can't fit in the shower as it is right now. There was also a, a very large change building over the existing roof at this end to, to, to the mudroom. What we are proposing, what we want to suggest is, let's see. We'd like to, on the front porch, we'd like to make it less steep. So the, the porch that was originally approved is five feet deep, we're bringing it back to 42 inches deep, but stretching it across the whole front of the house. And then on the second floor, moving the, the dormer that was here, just moving it over and creating a larger mess, a larger second floor bathroom. And then just leaving the existing roof as it is and extending the existing gable over the mudroom that was originally approved. So that's the extent of the work. It's in the view shed, so this is a little quick sketch, terrible sketch of, you know, how, how it affects the view of the house, which it doesn't really change the view in any way from the conduct. And then this is the front and rear elevation showing the changes. We have this new front porch here. And then the new dormer moved to the center. And you can see the, the way the roof line looks, which is essentially the way the roof, the back, that part of the house looks right now. It's just the mudroom part is pulled out a few feet. There are some comments from Han, which are easily addressed. We're essentially building it under all the previously approved tree protection, et cetera. And I'm sorry, I, I didn't put those on the drawings. But I can easily transfer all that onto the drawings. And, and those comments are very easily addressed. There was a question about the height of the house. The existing house is 21 feet 10 inches high. We're not changing that. And what were the other comments? There's a, I'm not sure why, but in the application data sheet, I put, under lot coverage, I put the FAR by accident. That's why there's a disagreement between that and the drawings and the other coverage in FAR form.
What, what is the coverage?
So the coverage is what's on the, the sheet, the spreadsheet, which is, hold on one second. I gotta get the right thing here. My computer has shut down for some reason, so I'm a little. So the proposed coverage is 1955, which I believe is what is also shown.
And where'd you get that value from? I think we just got to, you got to check that because I think when you calculate the coverage off the architecturals, it's a different square footage.
Really? Because I went through that a lot of times. I know that the.
Give us a breakdown, Doug. Show us a breakdown of each, each outfit.
Well, that's on, that's on, that breakdown is on the sheet.
Yeah, I know. Work the attributes on the, on the plan. Make sure you get everything, all right?
Can we do this offline? Because it sounds like this is grammatical things and crossing the t's and all that kind of stuff.
And then the only other important issue, George, is he's, his front yard setback is to the roof structure, not the main building.
Right, so they have a variance for the, the porch that was approved. I just need to go in front of the ZBA to get a variance for the reconfigured porch.
That's correct.
Which is actually closer to the house, so which is.
With more math.
That's true.
I, I think there's some details, if you were listening earlier, I mistakenly started reading. The height needs to be noted.
Yes.
You need to transfer, as you said, the tree protection details. Some of the trees are incorrectly identified as
Yes, that, I didn't have the notes from the original planning board approval. I had, I had the, I had the drawings from there, but I didn't, but I didn't have the notes that called that out. So I didn't realize they were improperly addressed.
And correct me if I'm wrong, if there's a thermal system going in the root system of a plum tree?
So there, I'm not involved with the geothermal system at the contractor. Well, no, the contractor and I aren't involved in that at all. That's separately contracted through the owner. However, I know it's in permitting, but there is, the, the client is, is actually now considering that they may not do that. So I wanted to ask, but you wanted me to show it on the drawings, but
You're either showing it on the drawing or they're removing it from the project.
Or move it somewhere.
But it's a separate filing, isn't it? It's not like
Doug, you're bifurcating an excavation project where I cannot get that contractor to show me sediment erosion control. So.
No, I, I understand that.
No, so, so, I mean, this is excavation. There's no construction access plan on your existing site plan. So we want to make sure they're not driving over. It's coordination. You just can't pick and choose what you want to do and what you don't want to do.
We can't seg, can't segment the project.
Bifurcate.
Well, you're saying it a different way. Segmenting. You like that?
I just asked if we can, if Doug can work out with Ed and, and the engineers, an appropriate way to present to this board so that we can look at it in a complete package before we go through this. Because this is not a, you know, a work session per se. You're supposed to be presenting a project that is complete and thorough and all that kind of business. Otherwise, it's, you know, I have nothing to say.
Yeah. Okay. I think we're done.
Well, is there any way I can be permitted to go to the zoning board so that I can adjust?
Actually not, no.
If you, if you've been listening to the other applicants, you can certainly get on their agenda for August. And then we still will look at what you're going to do to fix all the things that need to be fixed on August 1st. And, and if we're satisfied, then you can stay on.
That's fine. Okay.
Yeah, but in principle, just so everyone understands, it, it doesn't make sense at all to do a kind of a sketchy design that isn't being complete to then say you can go to ZBA because then what's the point of us?
George, we didn't say he can go to the ZBA.
Correct. Okay.
In fairness, he can get on the agenda and then on August 1st, we'll, we'll decide whether he's put together something that we can look at. And then if, if we're satisfied, he's already on the agenda. If we're not satisfied, he's off.
Perfect, perfect.
Okay, Doug?
Sure.
Somehow you disappeared, Doug. Where are you?
I'm here.
He's still there. I still see him.
All right, now I see you. Okay?
Sure, that's fine.
And, and like George said, there's a lot of engineering you gotta sit down with or somehow get together with Doug and Ed and work all these details out.
It's aside from
We're not, we're not, we're not in favor of a thermal unit in the, in the roots of a tree. If you were listening to the previous applicant.
I get that.
We were concerned about the roots of the tree. So it doesn't go
I totally understand that. But again, I have no idea what the geothermal plan is. That's, as I said.
We're not. You know, we're going to look at one application and you either bring them into the fold and you both make a presentation or we're not, you can't, we're not, what, next month, two months from now?
That's fine. My only other question is, taking the geo, if I take the geothermal out and add all the tree protection, et cetera, that's on the previously approved set of drawings, the only real change here is the, that's of import is the front porch. That needs to be addressed as I see it. Am I correct in that interpretation?
Well, we'll poll the board. Anybody have a problem with this? Start with Sheila.
I don't like to do a piecemeal and I would like to see the whole plan.
Well, his, his specific question about the porch, are we okay with that?
I am okay with it in relation to everything else, but if it's not, I, I still want to see it in relation to the finished plan. I don't like to see piecemeal.
We will see it finished or it won't go. Dan?
I, I would agree with Sheila's point. Again, the porch looks okay, but again, it depends on everything else, how everything else falls into place.
George? Same. Kevin?
I don't have anything to add.
Any, any comment from the public? Sarah, anybody out there?
No one's raising their hands.
No chat? Okay.
No chat.
Uh, I think we're done. You got your job cut out, Doug.
Thank you very much.
Ed, before I forget, I neglected to articulate the, the three variances the previous applicant had to do. And it had to do with the front yard setback, the exceeding coming forth.
Your setback in coverage.
Yeah, right. You got it. And I, I didn't articulate that, but I'm sure
You did. It was mentioned. I don't know if you did, but it was mentioned.
All right. All right, moving on. We are now on number five on the agenda, which is 2020-12, 7-9 South Cuttnet Street. Come on, Doug, get off.
I have no control over that.
You don't win the very bottom that says leave. The very bottom of your screen.
There you go.
Hi, John.
Hello, John Malone, Ferguson Malone Architecture, representing the Memcheck project. We received comments that we addressed with changes. The first two items are referral to CBA for a reduction in FAR that still exceeds allowable and a referral to ARB for partial demolition in the historic district. Item three from last month was some, was a, some changes, some improvements to the stormwater system, locating all of the cleanouts and locating the stub for phase two. Those were addressed. Then, then the driveway design has been revised to expand the, to reduce the paved area and expand the grass and planted area there. That piece was reviewed with Suzanne Nolan as we made that change. And then also the board asked for a second opinion from the arborist on the condition or the feasibility of pruning the existing street trees. Provided revised letters from our first arborist, provided a independent consulting arborist that is not, you know, associated with tree removal to provide a second opinion. And we also asked the tree commission to clarify their position for the board so that that was on record. I think we have Malcolm McBurney here, who is our consulting arborist, if there's any question on that. And then I'm not sure if there's something else that the board would like us to review. We, I have the drawings here to share or any other item that you guys want to go through.
I have no questions. You did a good job getting back and covering the points. Sheila?
I'm still, today, tonight's my tree night. I'm concerned about the trees. Some of, I think, John, you said, you mentioned taking one of them out or pruning it and it was okay with the arborist? I'm just wondering, is, am I correct?
So the trees are not, none of the, neither of the trees are being removed. I have Malcolm here. He should probably talk to you about the feasibility or what's going to happen to them when they're pruned. My understanding is that the reason to not hard prune them has more to do with the village's ongoing maintenance. So when the tree is going to be hard pruned like this, it's going to make a lot of leaves, right? A lot, it's going to try to replace its canopy. And what that means is that it starts to have a lot of output. So it needs to have regular maintenance going forward because of the size of the tree and the pruning had been neglected by the village for so long that, you know, you're not, you're now going to be in a cycle where the pruning may have to be more substantial. I think my understanding from the tree commission that this doesn't change anybody's opinion that the tree should stay. The hard pruning from an aesthetic point of view, and we can let Malcolm speak to this if you want, but we'll make the tree canopies better than what they are now. You know, they're kind of leggy and spread out. You know, eventually the, the canopy will come down, be more controlled. I think in terms of the beauty of the trees, they'll be in better shape.
And will they be fed more frequently or have they been fed at all?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if that's crucial part of it. If, Sarah, is there some way to let Malcolm address those specific questions?
I'm here.
Oh, you're, you can just speak. Well, there you go.
Okay. First of all, it would make no sense to, to feed the trees after you've cut them back hard. The tree will respond just to the pruning. More often than not, most people over fertilize a tree and stress it out. Trees have the ability to go through their own process for any repair that needs to be done. They usually do better on their own than intervention from us.
Okay.
Hey, Malcolm?
Yes.
Just a quick question. You know, I think this is, it's been very thoroughly examined, so to speak. And I just have a question about why would the first guy, do you think, and I don't mean to put him on the spot, would want these trees to go down and then all of a sudden, you know, what, what changed per se? Or what do you think might have changed?
Well, the caveat I'd first throw out is, is the first rule with, with tree selection is you want the right tree in the right place. Those trees, when they were planted, unfortunately, no one realized the problems that Bradford pears presented over a period of time. They were, they were the tree that everybody wanted in every town. And then they realized they caused a lot more problems than solutions that they were providing. That's the tree under wires that today, any, any public service utility would tell you, no, you can't plant those underneath the wires. We, they're just not compatible. Anytime you start putting trees in a situation where they're going to come in conflict with, with infrastructure, you gotta think to yourself, is there a better tree that's going to be more appropriate for that spot? The trees are there now, so you have to deal with it. The pruning I recommended is basically what's recommended in the most current ANCA 300 standards for pruning, which is heading and reduction cuts. It's going to take a lot of significant pruning to get those trees to the point where they're manageable, both for the wires and for the, for the structure. And once the pruning's done, the tree response will be to start suffering out, where you start getting a lot of these, these whips shooting out of the dormant buds that are particularly Bradford pears are notorious for. So at some point down the road, they're going to need to be thinned out before they become so overwhelming that you're right back to where you started from.
So I, I get what you're basically saying is that probably the first arborist said, these are the wrong trees. So let's get them, let's get them out now because, and let's build something else. Is that, but the other question really has nothing with this planning board. It's much more of, okay, does the village understand that they're responsible for the, the maintenance of this, right? And they're willing to, to follow your program to keep these trees intact? Do we know that? No, I'm asking, not you, I'm asking everyone else.
I was gonna say, I, I I think, I didn't ask permission.
George, I think, I'm not sure, but I, I think that Alan from the, the chairman of the tree commission is here and he's the one who has the direct conversations with, with Greg Nielsen, who's responsible for deciding how to maintain these trees. So Sarah, I don't know, is, can you see if, if
Well, I don't mean to make a big thing about this at all, is that in, in essence, what it sounds like to me that, that now you've had two arborists that basically have concurred that these can be pruned. And I just hope that the village understands the expense of doing that and what the implications are. Because if all of a sudden, two or three years, John, you're back saying, oh, well, we have to prune the trees again because they're in my window. I don't know if that's such a smart thing.
I think, I think, you know, the, the responsibility, like had the, had the trees been pruned on a more regular schedule by the village, they wouldn't have gotten to the situation where they're in now. I think the village, you know, has limited resources and, you know, sort of focuses probably, I don't know. Now I'm speaking for Greg, but I think they probably just focus
And I don't like, I don't like you to speak for other people, John.
Okay, I would imagine that it had
I'd like to avoid that.
Alan has his hand raised. I don't know.
We'll deal with him when Caesar's ready.
Go ahead. If I have something to say, would be appreciate his comment.
Sarah, can you let him in?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Hi, I'm Alan Richardson from the Tree Commission. You know, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of the questions and I think a lot of this can be cleared up just by saying that the trees do have a maintenance plan from the village. But of course, like every other village function, I don't believe we have the budget we need to prune every tree that is pruned. I know that, I mean, I'm speaking for the Department of Public Works when I say that they respond when owners contact them and ask for pruning. In this case, you've had an owner in that property that hasn't asked the village to prune those trees. And unless a homeowner contacts the village, the trees don't, don't usually get pruned. But as soon as they're pruned, they're contacted. DPW prunes trees in a very timely fashion. I discussed this back in April with Greg Nielsen and he had me contact Pat Laidman, the village consulting arborist. And you have to understand that when you ask an arborist for an assessment, their assessment is based on the need. And the village had no desire to remove those trees and pay for planting new trees. So when you ask Pat Laidman or when you ask Malcolm for their opinion, their opinion is based on what they know about trees, but not necessarily what's in the best interest of the village. So the village has a budget and the village is not prepared to remove the trees and replace them at this time. Therefore, the village chooses to prune them. And that's what you're seeing in your second arborist assessments. That's based on village need. The village need being to stay within budget.
Okay, so that answers my question, which is, the village is very aware of this and they want to not spend the money and, and pruning it goes. So, John, your, your clients will just have to call and get Greg to do it. I'm sure he'll do it.
He's already approved it. It's already on the slate to be pruned.
Fantastic.
I think Greg did a good job on this. Greg Nielsen did a fine job. Okay, I didn't finish polling everyone. Let's see. Dan, I got you. Kevin?
No, I, I think that covered everything.
Okay. And does anybody have an issue with, with this going to the ARB regarding the demolitions in the historic district? Does anybody have an opinion about going to the ARB on the board? Nobody wants to go to the ARB or somebody wants?
I, I say go.
Dan?
I agree with George. It has to be moved forward.
Sheila?
Definitely has to go to the ARB.
Kevin?
I agree.
Okay. Any comment from the public?
Caesar, before we go to the public, I want to stress that we were, would like to ask for referral to the ZBA as well.
Well, if you have been listening, we, we, you could get on the agenda.
Yes.
The CBA, but they don't meet until after our next meeting. So we'll have, you'll be back here. I don't know, when does the ARB meet?
They can make the meeting and they can make the deadline before your next meeting.
Okay, so when you come back, briefly as it may be, August, whatever the 1st of August is, I don't know the date of our next meeting, but the first meeting in August, you'll have the ARB opinion and at that time you'll already be on the agenda and, and, and if everything And, and, and if everything is in order, we'll say, okay, good, you're on the agenda, go ahead. If everything is not in order, we'll say, well, you may be on the agenda, but you can't go. If you were listening to the five other, four other
Yeah, yeah, we were. I just, I'm sorry, Caesar, I just wanted to confirm that we're also being put, you know, okay to submit to the ARB because that's what that means. I mean, ARB and ZBA will submit to both.
Right, and hopefully you will have the ARB determination before our meeting.
Right, and just one more procedural question. The, the resubmission to the planning board for the next meeting. The outstanding items are basically the approval from the ZBA and the approval from the ARB. Do you need any additional submissions from us in terms of more?
You're not going to have the ZBA for the next meeting.
No, no, I understand. So say, so our submission for
We're not gonna, let's see what the ARB has to say at the next meeting.
Okay, all right.
I think the only thing we're looking for, unless I'm wrong, is, is the ARB determination.
Right, right, right. So I'm just asking, so that would be the limit about submission.
Anybody on the board think there's anything more than the ARB determination? No, no. Okay, did I ask about the public, Sarah? Yes, I did. Any comment from the public going once?
No one has
Anything else? John?
Yeah.
Anything else? John, anything else?
Oh, I know, I, that's, I'm, I'm all set. I'm all set.
Everybody okay? We're all done? We're done. I will close the meeting, officially close the meeting of July 1st, 2020. Thank you all. It's been interesting procedurally on these, you know, somebody asked you, don't you have a set of plans? And I felt like saying, no, I never, haven't seen a set of plans in three months. It's all electronic. So anyway, we got along and we actually got another resolution that makes five under this electronic system. And Sarah, thank you very much for handling all this. Got everybody squared away today and a little rough bumps in the first 15 minutes. Who couldn't see, who couldn't talk, but it all got straightened out. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a nice 4th of July weekend.
Thank you.
Caesar, you too.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye, everybody.